All right, I want to call order the meeting on April 4th, 2016 of the City Council of the Crescent, of the City of Crescent City. We just came out of closed session. Is there anything to report out of closed session?
Nothing to report out of closed session this evening.
All right, thank you. Can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Holly?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Councilmember Short?
Here.
Pro Tem Inskor?
Here.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes, and I'm here. I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have three things on our consent calendar tonight. Number one is the approval of the regular meeting minutes from the March 21st, 2016 council meeting. We have receive and file warrant claims for the list for the period March 12th, 2016 through March 26th, 2016. And the last thing is receive and file the bi-weekly payroll report for the period ending March 19th, 2016 paid on March 25th, 2016. Is there any public comment on our consent calendar? See no public comment, closed public comment, bring it back to the council. Do I have any discussion or any motions?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro Tem Inskor?
Yes.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes, thank you, and that passes unanimously. Now we go on the reports and presentations. Item number four, we have presentation by Public Works Director Eric Weir and Interfaith Fellowship Council Chair Kevin Adams on the upcoming Kid Town Cleanup Project and Just Serve Initiative in Crescent City. Mr. Weir, come on up.
All right, thank you, Mayor Gasno, members of the council. Yes, it's always nice to present on these items as this particular item has been a great partnership for the city for many years now. I was reflecting back with Craig Bradford, who's been involved since we began, and will be speaking to you guys about the presentation, as well as Kevin Adams. But I believe that we've done four to five Kid Town projects over the last five years. The Kid Town projects, including this one that's coming up, includes the moving of approximately 100 yards of wood chips. So every time we have a semi truck that comes in and dumps just this massive pile of wood chips. Kid Town is structured such a way that it doesn't really make it practical to bring in backhoes or equipment to spread those chips. You need to do it with manual labor. So that's where we have these community service projects, and you have people that come out with wheelbarrows and shovels, and they actually manually take these wood chips that are in the parking lot and physically take them into the playground and rebuild that base structure so it is a safe playground for the community. Like I said, we've done four to five of those projects. We've done a weed abatement project, which was down along Front Street and in the downtown, where we went and physically hand removed the weeds out of the tree wells. Tsunami landing, we did a project in Tsunami Landing where we cleaned up the fountain area. I believe this was right before the first tsunami event that we had a couple of years ago, recognizing the 50th anniversary of that. We've done a landscape project right before the sea cruise was scheduled this year to try to spruce up that area, to again make the community look as best as we can. And then over the last couple of years, they've helped us in decorating the downtown Third Street area for the Christmas lighting. So what each of these projects have is it adds a component of community to it, community and community context, where we're trying to make our community look as good as we can. And it really is amazing the community support that we can get. My hats are off to Mr. Bradford and Mr. Adams for their involvement, bringing the community together. Some of these events, we've, most of the events, we've had over 50 people, some close to 100 people that come out, and it's amazing what you can do with many hands. So with that as an introduction, I'd like to introduce Craig Bradford, and he can come up and tell you a little bit more about the Just Serve program, which this, these projects are under now, and how we're going to move forward.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Bradford.
Well, good evening, City Council. I'll be calling for the slides instead of thumbing them myself. I was invited to speak about the same Just Serve concept that you've experienced over the past couple of years, even though we had church involvement long before that. Just Serve didn't come into formation until fairly recently. So please let me start my presentation with this question. Without the intended benefits of local volunteerism, as you just heard, how impossible would life be for the incorporated city of Crescent City, the unincorporated area of this quite vast county, and the three reserved communities supported by the Uroq and Talawadine tribes? Whatever one believes with respect to volunteerism, we all know that any kind of work amounts to costs in terms of human effort and financial expenditure. If financial budgets are not immediately available to pay for the broad range of human needs we experience here, public servants and IRS Code 501(c)(3) organizations must rely upon volunteers to charitably expend their time and oftentimes volunteers' money in the interest of helping. A growing number of our local residents barely exist on a dime and a prayer from day to day. In many cases, the various forms of welfare assistance available to them in this depressed economy might kick in to make the difference. However, those who do not qualify for welfare programs yet are nonetheless needy can find themselves in deep trouble when sickness or problems associated with aging tilt the scale against them. Similarly, when a public entity, like the City of Crescent City, for instance, finds itself in situations where regulatory demands imposed by state and/or federal agencies make it impossible for city employees to handle all of their chores, community volunteers can be called upon to make the difference. What attracts those of us who are volunteers? To many, volunteerism is a virtue. The scriptures say, let me quote, "Let your light so shine before men that they may see your good works and glorify your Father, which is in heaven." Close quote. To other faiths, charitable works have similar importance. For those who do not believe in a spiritual authority at all, charitable works, if nothing else, can strengthen family values and teach children what is truly important in life. Whatever one's faith or purpose in life might be, community volunteerism is all about genuine service to others and the intimate personal returns charity can bring to those who participate. Everyone wins where volunteerism exists, meaning both the performers of the service and the recipients of charity. Slide, please. Just a few of the volunteer opportunities in our community are listed here, and I'll remain quiet while you read. Thank you. Who can volunteer? Let's look at this slide. Individuals, neighborhood groups, families, scout troops. We have one coming up here shortly to replace the sign, if you will, up on 199 as we enter Delnart County. It's an Eagle Scout project. Service clubs, Rotary Kiwanis, Elks, fraternities and sororities, and church groups. Slide. The Just Serve concept was basically formed around the need to find volunteers. Just Serve is thereby a finding tool, nothing more. The service organizations listed on the previous slide can register and use Just Serve. All of them can use Just Serve to enlist volunteers as long as certain guidelines are followed. Let me point out again that Just Serve is simply a service to match community volunteer needs with volunteers. Just Serve's general Slide. The website is www.justserve.org. I would encourage everyone in this room to go online and register. It takes 15 seconds, and it is free. And by the way, you won't be putting your personal security at risk. You can volunteer for projects if you wish, and you can also post projects to attract volunteers. Moreover, you can see what projects are underway without committing to anything. It's that easy. An administrator like me will sort out those who would abuse the system and issue project approval to registrants within a day or so. We are convinced that by serving alongside each other in the community of Delnart County, we in effect are paving the way for positive changes later. Our individual efforts don't need to be huge. In other words, a bit of change here, a few hours there, but even small efforts quickly add up to make a real difference. Slide. You might have noticed last year that the Delnart County Interfaith Fellowship Council was given credit for the Kid Town Cleanup. Just Serve needed a local driving organization. The pastors of all 24 congregations located in Delnart County were therefore invited to use Just Serve as a tool to collectively identify, discuss, and provide compassionate and humanitarian services to all Delnart County residents who need help, regardless of nationality, race, or creed. And I should interject that Pastor Blake Inskor has been a valuable participant on the IFC. Imagine what we could accomplish here by drawing our county family together via unity of purpose exhibited by all 24 congregations. Unity of purpose. That means linking arms for the common benefit of all. What a concept. To get the ball rolling for the IFC last year, Kevin Bishop Adams volunteered to be its first chairman. Bishop, would you stand, please? He's been instrumental in helping us put together. Thank you, Bishop. After the IFC meeting scheduled next week for April 12th, Bishop Adams would turn over his gavel to another IFC pastor in alphabetical order, who then would serve as chairman for the coming three months. Chairman must rotate quarterly. Slide. Last, we need to recommend this year's Kid Town Cleanup Project for your approval. It is scheduled for April 23rd, starting at 9:00 in the morning and running till about noon, although we finished a little bit earlier than that last year. We're expecting at least 30 volunteers. Volunteers actually would be a bit limited because we can only have so much equipment. But we'll do that rain or shine. We're focusing on moving bark into the fenced area, as Eric just mentioned, and also weeding tree planters. There'll be some refreshments for the volunteers. We always spend our time on keeping them refreshed with water. And you should know that we have a $1 million liability insurance policy that has been provided by the LDS Church for one year. And in that, there's a $2 million package, so we can do other city projects and still be insured for, from, for one year, starting on April 1st. And we're going to put a PSA in the triplicate. I'll be working with Kimmy on that and also with our new Now, before I turn the microphone over to your Public Works Director and our dear friend, Eric Weir, I'm prepared to answer any questions you might have, and so is Bishop Adams.
Any questions or comments?
Just thank yous for your efforts. Thank you, Craig and Kevin, for putting this together. You've really made a difference in areas that you've worked on. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
I would just make one note about volunteerism. We've seen, we've seen a fluctuation in volunteerism in America. 10 years ago, we reached a point in America where volunteerism was approaching 30 percent of our population was involved in volunteerism, and we've seen swings back and down. In the last several years, we've seen it go down, you know, slightly every year. So the idea of having an organization put together that specifically sponsors volunteerism is absolutely crucial if we're going to continue to provide the resources. The government's never going to be able to provide all these resources, as Craig pointed out. And so to be able to have Just Serve sponsoring and promoting this, I think, at least in our community, I'd like to see us move that scale back up instead of seeing it go down. Nationally, right now, about 25 percent of our population is involved in volunteer projects annually. And there's no reason why we can't see that number much higher here in Delnart County. So I'm very appreciative of the work that we have the opportunity to be a part of. So, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Weir?
Yes, no, thank you, Craig, for then, that great presentation on Just Serve. And it really is a pleasure to be involved with this type of community effort, where you get to see people from all ages come out and work together, you know, especially the young children, where, you know, now they get to be a part of making Kid Town better, the playground that they get to come experience, play on. Now they get to help rebuild it. So hopefully, you know, as they get older, into their teenage years, maybe this prevents them from, you know, being involved in some of the vandalism that we so often see. You know, if you're a part of it, then you do have ownership over these things. So it really is great to see, and I'd like to thank, thank the Just Serve, thank Craig, and everybody involved in the program for making it a success.
Thank you. So Eric, what role will the city play in this project that's going to happen on the 23rd?
You know, the city, it's going to be our typical role on the 23rd. So the city would be responsible for providing the wood chips, and they're special safety wood chips. So that's included in our budget. So we will coordinate, we'll coordinate that effort of getting the wood chips there, having the materials there. We'll coordinate with Just Serve to get some, some community provided wheelbarrow, shovels, different things like that. We'll also be providing some from the city. We'll be providing any oversight that's needed for any city projects, so whether it's the Kid Town project, or it's the cleanup in the Tsunami Plaza, anything like that, we will have staff there to provide proper direction and oversight of anything to do with city-owned property. And like I say, it really has been a great help, not only this, this project and some of the other ones, but especially the Christmas lighting. What we try to do is we make sure that we have all the materials there, so that when people show up, they can accomplish something in a short amount of time that really does make a difference. So they show up at 9:00, by 12:00, they can look back and say, I've done something. I've, you know, been a part of this and made it better.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Back to our regularly scheduled program. We have public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are on at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record, and public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment? Come on up, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. It's really gratifying to see the city's commitment to listening to the Just Serve folks, and its commitment to helping beautify our community. It defines our community. And I also, it's not why I'm coming up here right now, I'm going to talk on another subject, but we are also having a city project, Just Serve, a sponsored project, April 9th, which is this upcoming Saturday, at a particular house on Mason Court near California. And it's, for lack of a better word, a hoarder house. So thanks to Wild River's foundation, we have a 20 cubic yard dumpster and a Take a Bite Out of Blight committee, and its volunteers will be making a dent in beautifying that little cul-de-sac and in that area. So we invite all members here in the city and any other members, including Just Serve members, to please join us Saturday morning, 8:30 to 12:00 noon. But I'm here on a different matter tonight, but it is related. In the next several weeks, you folks on the City Council will be looking at your 2016, 2017 budget. It's my hope that the council will revisit an area in great dire need of community and community concern. I ask you to reconsider the funding of a part-time code enforcement officer. Recognizing the many hats that city manager, excuse me, city planner Eric Taylor wears during the course of his busy day, I observe that part of his duties involve code enforcement. With all due respect to Mr. Taylor and his ability to wear and change hats on a moment's notice, one can only observe he needs some assistance in undertaking this vital community need. So I ask you to consider funding a 20-hour-per-week position to be placed under the jurisdiction of either the Crescent City Police Department or the City Community Development Department for this upcoming fiscal year. Understanding the importance of this position, I, as well as scores of other city residents with whom I speak with regularly, and especially now as I'm knocking on doors during this election season, hear this same concern over and over again. What can you do to make our community a more beautiful place? It seems to be a river of unending dumped mattresses, junked vehicles, couches, and various other litter scattered not just on vacant lots, but in front of properties, and it stains our community. It defines our community in a way that you can only make a first impression one time. This wanton, irresponsible behavior stigmatizes Crescent City and detracts from the pristine beauty which surrounds us via our ocean and redwood trees. A beautiful city is a magnet for visitors and a source of pride for residents. So again, I would ask you, please, during these next several weeks, to consider the funding of a part-time code enforcement officer. And if I didn't announce my name, Roger Gitlin, 225 Lighthouse Way in the City of Crescent City. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Any other public comment? No? All right, seeing no other public comment, closed public comment. On our next thing, public hearings, we have none. We're on now to continuing business, number five. We have a memorandum of agreement with Elk Valley Rancheria for the purchase of fire equipment and building modernization project to be funded by the ICDBG. Nice. All right, Mr. Weir?
All right, thank you, Mayor Gasno, members of the council. As it seems like we've been talking about components of this item for the last couple of meetings, and this is indeed just the next step. Brief background is that the Elk Valley Rancheria was successful in obtaining an approximately $800,000 grant for building modernization improvements and the purchase of a new fire engine on the Crescent City Fire Hall, as well as the equipment to provide it therein. The city has agreed to provide the match, and we were part of the application process. So the city's authorized match is 201,866 for this grant. But the ICDBG program, follow right in line with the mayor on that one, stands for the Indian Community Development Block Grant, and so Elk Valley Rancheria was the, was the only eligible applicant for that grant. So that's where they are going to be running the grant. So what's before you tonight is the memorandum of understanding, which outlines their responsibilities as well as our responsibilities. So in general, the city will be responsible for the preparation of the plans, specifications, and the RFP that will need to go out for the equipment purchase, and then the plans and specs for the building modernization project. We'll be providing the construction management services for the project, as well as reviewing all project documents, inspection and quality assurances for the project. What was before the council at the last meeting was an amendment to Stover Engineering's contract, and they will be assisting us in providing a lot of these services, since they'll be involved in the seismic retrofit portion of the project that's already commenced. And then also, the city's obligation will be to provide And then also, the city's obligation will be to provide the matching funds, which is 25%. In the details of the agreement, if we spend less than what the grant is for, the city will pay 25% of whatever the lesser amount will be, up to that 25% of the total grant amount, which is the 201,000. This is a city-owned building. The city will be retaining any equipment that is purchased. So, if the project does go over this grant amount, the city will be responsible for any overages. So, Elk Valley Rancheria, their portion of this is applying for the funds. They will be helping us in the grant management, but in the end, these are going to be city assets that are going to stay with the city. So, that's why we'll be responsible for any cost overruns. So, as I said, Elk Valley Rancheria will be responsible for the procurement of the equipment and the construction contract. So, as this proceeds, we'll come back to the council to give direction to proceed with the Rancheria, but they will actually be the ones that will be executing the final contracts for procurement of the equipment or construction contracts. And then they are responsible for the overall administration of the grant as well. Looking at the project schedule, time is of the essence. Our Fire Hall project has already commenced on the seismic retrofit. We had the abatement contractor come in. They removed a lot of the interior drywall and a lot of the abatement type of measures that need to be taken, so it's well underway. This is a unique project in which these two projects have to blend. We're already running into little, little challenges here and there where the contractor runs into something. They're ready to move past it, but yet there's a component that's in this project that needs to be completed. They're ready to cover the wall ups. We're working hand in hand with the contractor. There will be little nuances where we're going to probably have to get some of those things done before this project can actually get going. So, there are going to be some minor change orders that are going to be associated with the other one before this project commences. So, there, and we'll keep the council updated as those things come along. Schedule for this project, so April 4th tonight, hopefully, the council will approve this MOA between the Rancheria and the city. Next week, it'll go before the Elk Valley Rancheria. Hopefully, we will have the bids out for solicitation on April 18th. The project will hopefully bid around May 18th, and then the project can commence somewhere early June. So, that's when we'll actually be able to, to kick this off in, in full steam and have the projects fully be blended together. Again, it does have to be bid, so it'll be open to all contractors to bid this. And then the estimated completion date is right around September 30th, which coincides with the seismic retrofit.
Any technical questions for Mr. Weir? Okay, I want to open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this particular item? Seeing no public comment, closed public comment. I'm bringing it back to the council for discussion and/or motion.
I just have one question, Mr. Weir. If, if, because of the timeliness of this, if, if this is approved on the, on the 13th next week by Elk Valley, is it possible to expedite and even have the, because I know that it has to be out for three weeks, right? I mean, can, can we open up the RFP the next day? Do we have to wait till the following Monday?
We had to, you know, it was a pretty tight timeline from when we approved the amendment to Stover, when we actually received the authorization that we did receive grant funding. So, it was three weeks of repackaging. We will try to push that as quick as we can. So, right now, it's slated for the Rancheria to approve the MOA on the 13th, and then we would be soliciting bids on the 18th. So, it's about a five-day window. If we can bump it up a few days, we will. But I can't promise it at this time. We have the contract with Stover to be done on the 18th. We can try to bump that up a few days. It might just mean the issuance of some addendums if there aren't, isn't some work done, but that would save us a couple of days.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
I'd just like to say this is a great project. This, this partnership with the Elk Valley Rancheria and the work that they're doing is, is just a wonderful opportunity. So, I, and if any, unless someone has additional questions, I would move that we authorize the city manager to sign a memorandum of agreement with the Elk Valley Rancheria to approve ICDBG funds to be used for building improvements to the Crescent City Fire Hall and to purchase a fire engine and, and some other equipment.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Can we please pull a vote?
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro Tim Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes. Thank you, and that passes unanimously. Yes, sir.
If I, if I may, Mayor, just wanted to reiterate Councilmember Hawley's thoughts with the partnership between the city and Rancheria. They have put a lot of work into this, so I can't thank them enough for this partnership. What a great asset it's going to provide to this whole community. So, the Rancheria has been great to work with, and so can't thank them enough.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. Okay, we're on to item number six, considering provide analysis, discussion, and decision for several components of the proposed council policy and procedure manual. Ms. Scott.
Mayor Gasnow and members of the council, it's good to see you this evening. And just a brief review for folks in the audience that haven't, that weren't here for the first discussion. What is proposed here is a council policy and procedure document, which in essence takes 30-plus years of different resolutions and ordinances and traditions, and tries to compile those into something that is beneficial for seated council members, staff, those that might wish to join the council, citizens who are just curious about the functioning of the council and council meetings and interactions between council members and staff. So, this was quite a bit of an undertaking to figure this all out, and I'm sure that this is, I doubt that this is the last meeting that we will have on this. But, so we presented this item originally March 7th, and with just kind of some rough ideas. I did hear back from several of you after that with some recommendations, some questions. So, I tried to incorporate those as well as I could and then lay out what areas it really seemed like there need to be some decisions around. There may be additional areas that I didn't catch I would like you to bring to my attention. And basically, I just plan to kind of go through these one by one, and we can discuss it and see which direction you'd like to go. So, we'll just start off with a doozy, I guess. That's a code of ethics. So, it's been a while since the council has visited their code of ethics. It, it's a good code of ethics, but it might be a little outdated. So, I, I did not know if you wanted to revisit that and in what way, if you do want to revisit that, how you would like to proceed in trying to form a new code of ethics.
Discussion.
I, I think it'd be appropriate if we updated it and if you wanted, I don't know what the rest of the council has in mind, if you think the same way, or does anybody else think we should have it updated? I think it would probably be appropriate.
I think because of the, the timing of the last update may have, may have been specific driven by certain circumstances that affected the council at the time, that it would certainly be worthwhile to, to look at some other samples and maybe update that so that it falls in line with, with our strategic plan and the city's vision and do it in a time of neutrality where there's not any conflict amongst the council and that we can really look at this at a very even keel vantage point. So, I think that there's some wisdom in taking a look at it.
I agree. I think we need, we need to review the code of ethics. It's, it's time. We all take the required training, but, but we, we need to review our code of ethics. As we go through these, Kimmy, it, it's going to be interesting going through these. I don't know if at some point, just kind of keep in our back of our minds whether or not we want to appoint a couple of members to work with you on some of this and come back. Because there's, there's a lot of information here and a lot of proposed changes, and we might be able to do some of them with this kind of banter, but it's, it's more likely going to be a work group of some kind, I would think.
I sound like a volunteer. Just saying, it sort of sounded like you were volunteering.
And I, personally, I think that that's a great idea, and maybe we go through these kind of briefly tonight to gauge everybody's feel and then take the next steps.
All right, so we're in agreement with reviewing these and updating them to more modern. All right, on to the next one.
Okay. Onwards and upwards. Term. So, this is more of a technicality, and it does kind of hinge on something else further down as far as when meetings should take place. But currently, it states that on Tuesday after the general municipal election, the city council shall choose one of its number as mayor and one as mayor pro temp. Seeing as we generally meet on Mondays, you know, again, it's just a technicality, but if we're going to clean it up, I figure let's do it right.
I agree. There's a few places in here where conflicts were.
Right. So, that would be like a special meeting, of course.
Yeah.
So, and we love special meetings.
Can't we just clean that up by just simply saying the first scheduled council meeting after the general election, and then we don't have to worry about what date we're meeting?
It'd be very simple to just, yeah, rephrase part of that resolution and readapt it.
Yeah, we, so just prepare a new resolution.
Yeah. Okay.
Love it.
Okay, so far, not too painful. Meeting schedule. So, this one, I expect may have some more discussion as we typically meet on Mondays, have done that for quite a while. But if we are really trying to promote participation by the public, I do have some question as if Monday night's really the best night for that. Mondays are typically kind of difficult. People are kicking off their week, and to try to add a council meeting to that is rough. I did poll, and I meant to bring it tonight, and I forgot, I apologize, but I did poll the other city clerks on my list serve and found that there were a lot of Wednesdays and Thursdays in that mix. There are some Mondays, but some of those Mondays that I received kind of felt the same way, that it felt burdensome. So, again, I don't know what the schedule is necessarily with the other nights here at the Flynn Center and where there would be room if you did wish to juggle this, but I thought it was worth bringing up, asking the question.
You'd have another night of poker, wouldn't you?
I, I, I think, I think the location is critical, and, and so we need to be here, and I don't know what nights are available. If everyone's in agreement, maybe you could come back with, with what nights are a possibility to use this, this facility, and maybe it'll become clearer then.
And then I didn't know if you were interested in maybe asking for some input as far as from the community.
Oh, yeah, like maybe.
I mean, I can run a couple of polls on social media and ask the question in a couple of different forums and just see what works for our community, because that's something else that I heard a lot, was it's really based on what sort of industry is in your community, what kind of jobs people hold, you know, on when most people are available, so.
Oh, I know I like to curl up on a Sunday with the agenda created.
The social media poll, I think, might be useful tool for us to evaluate.
Okay.
I'm open to different days. Tuesdays would be out for me, but any other day, I'd be open to.
Okay.
Yeah, Wednesday would be fine with me.
Wednesday would be out for me.
Yeah.
Oh, out for me. Well, you can see how this.
It's already narrowed.
So, you have Monday, Thursday, and Friday.
No Fridays.
Friday's probably not a good idea.
So, see if the Flynn Center's open on Thursday nights. Otherwise, we're sticking with Monday.
I'll do a little research.
Yeah, there you go. I'm not starting.
Tuesdays at 10:00 works really good.
I'm not starting my weekend with a city council meeting.
Okay, placement of items on the agenda. So, the next two bullet points have to do with this, and so there's an ordinance that states that items must be submitted at least 10 days prior to the meeting, but, you know, the more flexible thing here is the resolution, which states how those are submitted. So, currently, there's a little discrepancy in what we typically do and what the resolution So, just looking for how you feel on that.
I just think we should update the resolution to eliminate that conflict, just redraft or readapt.
And the resolu, the ordinance says 10 days?
The ordinance says 10 days.
Okay, so maybe we need to take a look at the ordinance too, because I do, I don't think that's what we've been doing necessarily.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that there's a little fluctuation there too, probably.
So, we probably need to update the ordinance as well.
Or just apply it consistently.
Yeah.
Instead of making exceptions or not doing it, if we don't, if the council doesn't, isn't on the stick and gets its stuff in on time, then it doesn't go on the agenda. I mean, as opposed to changing something, I mean, unless there's a reason why the ordinance is, is outdated and that a 10-day window is somehow too restrictive. I mean, we have, we have policy for emergency issues if we have to deal with them. I think for regular business, I think maybe we just start using the, the policies that we have in this, in this situation as opposed to changing it, but.
How old is the ordinance?
Hmm. Won't be able to tell you exactly, but I, if I can find the section here, I can give you a ballpark.
I think it's a great thing that you did this policy and procedure manual, because I don't believe I was aware of the ordinance either.
Yeah, I'm not finding it, but I want to say that it's a 600 series ordinance, so, you know, it's not ancient. I put it probably in that five-year timeline. So, but like Mr. Inscore pointed out, there is, there are procedures for if there's an emergency item that needs to be taken, and the 10 days does give us a little more time to. I think the whole, the thought behind 10 days is it gives us some time to research an item and provide you with a fair background.
And if we have an item that we, that, like, if we have an item tonight that we want to put on the agenda, we're 10 days out from our next meeting anyway.
Right.
So, again, I don't think that this, as it, as it is, it may not be what we're practicing, but it doesn't seem like that, that the policy as it stands is really that restrictive for us to, to simply abide with. I don't, unless there's some reason why we have noticed that this has been, I think it's just sort of, we've kind of fallen into, this is sort of how we're doing it. So, let's just stop and do it right.
And so what, and so what I'm hearing with the, I believe the ordinance as it is, but the resolution kind of update to current practice.
Yes.
Right, and then we, we should follow the policy.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next.
Order of Business, another one that I think there may be some more discussion around. So, I did propose a new order of business in here, and just trying to put some thought behind when we have people come to a meeting, what sort of items people tend to come for most, so that we can get those done earliest, so that people can participate more again in the things that they would like to participate in, so that you don't have to wait around half the meeting to get to a public hearing that you want to speak at. And, and then also to streamline the housing authority and successor agency into our regular agenda, as some other cities do. Just seems a little convoluted right now, and we're posting three agendas once a month. Seems more work than we need to do. So, I don't know if you've taken a close look at the order of business I proposed, and if you had some comments, but I would be happy to hear them.
I want to say, I appreciate you taking the effort and rearranging this. I totally agree with what you did here. Thank you for taking the liberty and, and looking into this. I like what you've done here.
Right, and I totally agree. I've often thought that people that have to sit through some lengthy presentations when they're here for one item that comes at the end of the agenda, and that I felt like I wished that they hadn't necessarily, unless they really wanted to stay for the whole meeting, that they could have gotten there. that they could have gotten their business done and left, and I think that's very considerate. So, I like, like what you've done.
Thanks.
I agree.
So, nobody's opposed?
No, whatever script you put in front of me, I'll go for.
Okay. Conducting business at a late hour. So, this is something that I had seen in some other policy and procedure manuals. It was pointed out that this really hasn't been an issue for us. I don't know if it's even worth addressing in a procedure manual.
In the past, it has. They used to have meetings go to like 1:00 a.m. I think... No, it was, it was in the way back, I mean, maybe about eight years ago or something like that. When they had the meetings over at the Cultural Center, they would go on forever.
Well, I don't understand. We, we can always stop a meeting and, and reconvene it at a later time.
We certainly can. I think that the only reason that it, there may be some benefit including it in the manual is just if you, I mean, you all work very well together, but we may be going through some changes and just in case that were not the case, having ground rules established may be beneficial.
Having the ground rules, having that expectation there. I don't know what time you would agree to set yet, but having that, that baseline expectation is a good idea.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty. Stops the filibuster, is what it does.
Well, you would avoid somebody going all Ted Cruz during the council reporting period and talking all night long just to make a point. I, I mean, not that anybody would do that, but somebody would, right? So, I, I think that there ought to be some guidelines that says that, you know, unless there's a, unless there's a majority vote to continue a meeting, you know, late, we ought to have a cutoff. So, I don't know, but that's my...
Doesn't, doesn't Rosenberg's Rules of Order allow us to, to stop the discussion and, and move on to a different time?
I believe so.
I, I think it does.
Well, maybe we don't, maybe we just look at our Rules of Order that gives us that option.
That's what I think.
Sure, well, that's good. Fine, we won.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, right. We'll stay all night.
Reduce paperwork.
And get good seats for the Board of Supervisors meeting in the morning.
So, City Manager Code of Ethics.
Wow. Definitely. Definitely.
Okay, nobody looked directly at him. The ICMA does a great job, I think, of outlining a great code of ethics which I don't believe just, you know, pertains necessarily to the city manager. I've got it sitting on my desk and, you know, I think it's just a, a good way for us to conduct ourselves as public servants. And if the city council has a code of ethics, I don't see why we shouldn't have it on our site as well. And we already have this great one created by this organization that looks at this and updates it and that was where my thought was coming from, that we could just carry it over and use it for our own purposes.
I like it. I like it also. Yep. Mr. Knight, you think you could live by those 12 tenths of...
Why, yes, I can.
Okay, so the next section is where it kind of starts to get a little bit messier. Let's see. So, first, having to deal with budget allotments for council members. So, at least in the short time that I've been here, kind of typically what happens is we give each council member an equal allotment in their budget and then we have another budget line for some of the other expenses like the, you know, Redwood Empire meetings. Everybody doesn't use their budget the same way and I think that that's fine and that's good that people go and do more things maybe in their younger years on the council, younger years on the council. You may be getting more training. You may be getting more training, you may participate in more things to be in your capacity. But I don't know that we want to, I don't know how to approach it as far as, we don't have a policy in place if somebody goes and spends, say, a thousand dollars more than the other council members. I don't know if you want to have something in effect for that, just, you know, when we go over in budget and other areas where we bring that to you and just get the checkmark approval.
Yeah, I can see like, you know, we all have an equal amount, maybe all in one pool, but we have individual things, because I know I'm not going to use my, any of my travel stuff today, but I wouldn't mind ceding it over to somebody else who needs to go to a meeting somewhere else to represent the city, so.
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, looking to that, you know, we have it all under one council travel line item and then individual ones and then they can transfer in between there. I don't think we need to have it so bad that it, oh, I guess you got to have finance involved in it anyways. But do that, so it's like one big slush fund, slush fund, thank you. And one big fun, because we travel all over the place, yeah. And so then if, you know, cede it up, someone, I'm going to stop talking now.
No, I think that's a good idea because sometimes one, one council member attends more functions than another council member does because another council member has restrictions on their job or whatever.
Right.
So, you just move the funds from one council member to the other and so you...
And again, this is kind of one of those things that we've, we've practiced like that, so we just, you know, as I tend to monitor your budget and as long as you don't go over the cap as a whole, as your budget as a whole, I don't raise any flags, but again, just because we've been practicing it that way, it might be nice to...
Make it official.
Make it official, right? Especially because it's financial related.
Yeah, I, I think that's the best way to do it and then just, just as long as...
Right, Mr. Inskor brings up a good point is that if there is going to be, you know, a transfer over to one other one, there should be consensus from the whole council for that transfer to somebody else. What do you think about that? So, like, you know, Mr. Inskor goes off to Vegas and we don't want to like have our, our money used...
For that slush fund?
Yes, for your slush fund to Vegas. So, it should be, there should be some oversight on that.
So, if I draft something along the lines of if you exceed your allotment, we'll bring it to the rest of the council for an approval, I could bring out, brack some language along those lines and you can review that.
Yeah, we should probably periodically review where we are with, with the training budget.
Okay.
And I, and I know the city managers in the past have said, you know, we're using this budget up. When I was mayor, Mr. Palazzo would come and say, "Look, if we're using up the budget here, what do you want to do?" So, that's one option, but I think all light in the air. We should hear, hear about it and make the decision together.
Transparency, yeah. I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
We can approve your junket to Vegas. Perfect.
Also, maybe the meals, it does seem kind of ridiculous that you're held to a certain amount. You know, if you go on travel and it states right on the travel or the announcement that a meal is going to be a certain amount of money, but it's over what the city's allotment is, it does seem kind of ridiculous that the city wouldn't cover that. So, we need to redraft that part of it to, to state that we, we would have some flexibility there to, to cover what is stated on the training announcement or, or travel.
To accommodate what the...
With the conference.
Yeah, with the conference.
Meals are, yeah, and it seems to be more and more common now that conference dinners, especially, tend to exceed the per diem rate.
Now, those rubber chickens are getting more expensive.
Yeah, and, and we have, just for your knowledge, made a couple of statements to the organizers as well that, you know, there is a per diem rate that's statewide and maybe there should be a little more effort to try to keep those meals within that rate. So, that has been brought to their attention, but meanwhile, they still tend to exceed that, so. And it's just not real clear in our policy again, so trying to clean things up.
Have we made ourselves clear on this?
I think so. There should be a statement that meals that are, conference meals should be covered at the rate. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And generally, are our, our travel policies are, are parallel with, with employee travel policies, I would think, as far as per diem is concerned?
Yes.
They're, okay.
Yes.
So, we can, we can look at that?
Yeah. So, also, an area of discussion that there has been in the past has been this statement in our Public Use of Resources policy around paying for meals, that the statement in there specifically states for overnight travel. And so, when we have had some staff trainings in the past, there's been some internal discussion at the city as to whether or not that's really covered under a policy. If staff is, say, you know, at an eight-hour training and if the city wishes to provide lunch to keep staff there and do some networking, again, there's no clear direction on whether or not that's acceptable, so.
So, we can cover that in our budget? For staff, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Because like if they go to Humboldt, they should be able to, the city should buy their lunch, you know, if they go down there for a meeting or a training or something.
Yeah, and right now, I mean, the policy is unless they're spending the night in Humboldt, you know...
Yeah, but that's kind of silly, you know, it's a three-hour drive backing down and then you're going to be there at least for an hour for a meeting, they, they should have their, a meal reimbursement. Seems only right. I mean, if, if, if somebody has to go to Humboldt for a meeting, they should, they should have their lunch purchased, I think.
I'm not sure I agree. I mean, I, I think that we have a responsibility certainly to cover people's mileage if, if they're not using a, a city vehicle, to cover them going and coming, but if they're working that day, we wouldn't have paid for their lunch during any other eight-hour day. We're covering their travel expenses, so I, I, I'm not sure that just going to a meeting registers...
But they could go home for lunch here and they can't go home for lunch down there.
Well, that is, I guess that's, that's true.
Anyway, that's not our...
They can pack their lunch too.
I kind of, yeah. I mean, I suppose... I agree with Councilman Inskor. My, my thought was that, you know, I pack my lunch every day, so I was thinking if it was inside of normal work hours, then no, we're probably not going to buy your lunch. But if there's a training or some event that, that went outside of normal work hours, then...
That's a good one.
Then, then maybe a meal should be considered by the city.
Like over a weekend or if you have to go down on a Saturday?
Well, yeah, that's...
Anyway, that's during budget talks, not, this is...
What, what guidance are you asking for in this?
I'm not really sure. You guys just confused me three different ways.
I'm sure we're giving you all the guidance you need.
But this is, that's for our, this is for...
This is for us.
Us, not for employees, right?
I do agree about the, the removal of the overnight stay wording, but something, just to eliminate it and leave it alone, I think would leave it too wide open. We need to put something in there, some, like, like I said, something about outside of normal work hours, some, some sort of similar wording like that.
But this is just for council, not for employees.
Well, and, but like you said before, the, the employee policy around this really is reflective of the council policy, so...
But when we talk about our budget?
Right.
Our budget, when we handle our budgets.
I think this is going to need some more discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can agree on that, more discussion.
Okay. And then the, the threshold to bring travel to the council for approval. So, right now, any sort of travel and training expense for staff or council that exceeds $2,000 comes to the council for approval. Right now, that is regardless of whether or not it's already been budgeted and also, as I noted in here, expenses for travel and just for registration for a lot of these conferences is steadily going up. So, as you've been seeing here in recent months, there have been several brought to you, whereas when I first started 18 months ago, there wasn't really any, and I think it's just the rising cost. My thought is that 2,500 is a pretty fair breaking point where most travel and training expenses for your typical trainings that city employees engage regularly in fall below that. I also, my other thought on this, they're kind of two different points, is at what point do we bring it to you for approval and the other point is do we bring it to you for approval if it's already been approved in the budget? Right now, even if it's been approved in the budget, because of the policy, we still have to bring it to you again, which seems very redundant. So, I think it needs at least cleaning up in that area.
I, I don't know why it would even comes back to the, to the council. If, if we've approved the budget and the, the managers want to expend the budget for a particular kind of training, I think that's for, for staff to decide. I, it just seems like overkill when we're talking about $2,500, you know, and I've seen that with the police department and the, and the K-9 unit and those things. But, I mean, it's not going to be controversial coming, coming to the council, but it seems like we've already approved it once, why do we need to see it again, in my opinion?
Yeah, I agree. I don't think we need to see it at all unless it exceeds the allocations in the budget, which could happen in a given year. I mean, we could have a bunch of new employees and a department may be in a situation where they don't have enough money in their training budget. Other than that, I don't think we need to see it at all. To get a budget, work with it.
Okay. Consensus there.
All right, and we want to up that limit to 2,500?
No, we're not up, there is no limit.
Basically, if you put it in your, your budget, you're good. And if you exceed what's in your budget, then we need to bring it forth.
No.
Love it.
Yes.
It's why we have managers.
Okay. What did I miss?
Oh, gosh. I think you did a great job.
I think you missed anything.
Thanks. Okay, do you wish to have a couple council members work with me in polishing this thing for the final, what's hopefully the final presentation?
I think that's only fair to you. I mean, that's, you know, and I, I really think that Mr. Holly would be a fine, a fine...
I'd be honored to do that.
Good.
I will volunteer along with Mr. Holly if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm even more...
That is awesome. Volunteering is alive and well at the city council.
That's right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let it be said that 40% of the council was volunteering tonight.
All right, we got to get back there. Let me bring up my, go back. Okay, so we have, oh, hey, we're on the new business now. Excellent. Item number seven, presentation on Find Your Park Crescent City event scheduled for Labor Day weekend and consider request to co-sponsor and approve activity within Beachfront Park. Ms. Scott.
Longtime no see. Hi. Mayor Gassno and the council. So, you've probably been hearing some scuttle about Find Your Park Crescent City. Some of you, it's more than scuttle. Basically, this idea began to be hatched sometime last year when Supervisor Howard approached Ms. Battlesburn with Park Service and said, "What can we do to work together to help our local economy? There's got to be some way that we can collaborate and partner up." The timing was really good in that shortly thereafter...
The timing was really good in that shortly thereafter, we were introduced and I took Ms. Battlesburn on a tour of Beachfront Park. And we walked around the park and I showed her the master plan and described to her vision and what we really wanted to do. And then, so, we went back to our corners and she sat there with gears turning and came back to me and said, hey, I have an idea. You know, we've got the Centennial Celebration coming up this next year, and one of the initiatives is Find Your Park. And the Park Service is thinking a little bit outside the box this time, and Find Your Park is not just about national parks, it's really more about outdoor space and going out and getting involved and experiencing that. So here in Delano County, as we all know, we have an abundance of amazing outdoor space. It's one of the things that really defines us, and it's one of the things that we can get excited about. So we had a couple of meetings around that idea, and she brought forth a list of some ideas, and I really liked that she took that Beachfront Park master plan vision and ran with it and said, what if we do some sort of an event and created some activities in each of these areas that align themselves with the master plan? So we decided at that point that this was bigger than anything that any of us could do alone, and the only way that something really amazing was going to happen is if we reached out to all of our partners and invited them to the table and to see if they were interested in participating, what kind of ideas they might have, and to go forward from there. So before I get too much further down that line and talk about where that went, I'd like to introduce Ms. Connie Battlesburn, or Supervisor Howard if he wants to stay something for a minute. All right, and she can introduce you more to the Park Service side of things and Find Your Park and the Centennial event.
Thank you, Mayor Gastineau and council members. For those of you who did not hear my name, my name is Connie Battlesburn, and to provide you with some of my background information, I've only been working for the parks for about 15 months. Prior to that, I worked for the Forest Service for 20 years. But I was raised by two parents who were heavily involved in the logging industry, and I also have a master's degree in business administration. So you can only imagine what started happening inside of my head when Chris Howard came to our Board of Supervisors meeting and said, hey, what can you do to help our economy? I know where I came from, you know, we were hard hit when the spotted owl situation occurred and people were suffering. So with that, I started working with Kimmy, and we, of course, you know, she has this exuberance about her, and she was extremely passionate about the Beachfront Park area. So I looked at it and I said, well, why do we have to wait for the Beachfront Park to be developed? Why not give people an experience there that they can take with them and potentially encourage them to provide financial backing in the future when they actually see something happening in the area? So of course, I took each and every, I sat down and I looked at each and every area and I said, well, what can we do here? Well, maybe Mayor Ron Gastineau or Chris Howard would want to hold a lacrosse tournament, or maybe a soccer tournament. Maybe we could have some type of vendor situation happen over in the pavilion area, and maybe we could have even better, more crazy, wonderful events for families and children in a different area. And so when, you know, Kimmy and I met together, you can only imagine the synergy we had to make this happen. So from an idea or concept that we came up with, it's grown exponentially. We have members, and I think Kimmy will probably touch on that later, but it's grown exponentially in regard to interest in trying to generate visitation to the area in a time, Labor Day weekend, when your visitation starts to be lowered. In regard to the Park Centennial, some of you already know that in 2016, the National Park started their 100th anniversary celebration. For this park in particular, you know, in many metro parks, it's easy for the National Park to collaborate with cities and counties and everything else, but, you know, the National, the Redwood National State Parks is kind of outside of Crescent City. So when I first approached some people who worked for the parks and said, hey, let's bring the parks to Crescent City, there was a little bit of reluctance. You know, it was hard to think about stepping outside of the park boundaries to collaborate with other government entities. Now Steve Prokop said, hey, go for it, let's see what we can make happen here. And so did, at that time, Jeff Bomke before he took his promotion down south. And so we started moving forward and started talking to people, and I started working with a person who is the Pacific Northwest Coordinator in Seattle, and she said, yeah, there's some parks doing that, but I thought, you know, more than likely, the parks are already in the city area, we're going to do something different. So the whole entire goal here is, one, with the Find Your Parks Initiative, is actually to look at generations, not just our generation, but generations to come, and have them step away from their computers and start experiencing the outdoors maybe a little bit differently. In this situation, you know, the experiencing the trees, you know, that's an experience, but not every park has that. And there are so many different parks here in Delano and Crescent City that people can experience and bring home their own values and their own, their own things to share with their families for generations to come. So that's our, that's our goal and objective. Now, I know that Kimmy is planning to talk a little bit more, so I told her I could say I could probably talk about this for about 10 minutes. And, you know, I want to say, I want to commend Kimmy and Chris Howard for being so supportive of this activity. And I think, are you going to talk about all the events that we have coming up? And I think you already have the flyer in regard to what we've already have buy-in to happen here in Crescent City, and of course, if you guys want to offer something else, we would definitely be open to hearing about it. Chris, would you like to say something?
These young ladies are too kind in bringing me into this fold. They ran with this idea and they're doing a great job, and Kimmy absolutely should be commended by every person on this council for running with it. And Connie, you know, she grabbed this idea and she ran with it, too, and it's what's going to create those partnerships and those synergies to help make your downtown beautiful, our community beautiful. And I'd encourage us, and this is again, thinking outside the box, all this takes energy, volunteerism, which you've heard about tonight, but more importantly, our backing, both the Board of Supervisors and the city, is going to come when it comes time to advertise this. And I'd encourage you, when eventually there's a budget that does come forward, that we put some monetary backing behind it, exclusive of what we've done already to the Visitors Bureau.
Thank you, Chris. With that said, Chris, Kimmy, you're up.
So as has been touched on a couple of times already tonight, this, the thing that's been really exciting about this is that it has grown exponentially. We initially started with a few kind of key players. We invited the harbor to the table, we invited the school district to the table, and we brainstormed some ideas, and then, of course, the county to the table. And then it grew. We asked those folks to invite other people to the table that they thought might be interested in participating, and to invite more ideas to the table. You know, maybe you can't do it, but maybe you have an idea and somebody else can grab that idea and do it. And so we've been meeting with our planning team every two weeks now, on Thursday mornings for an hour, and what we've come up with is this. So about the second or third meeting, we asked, okay, who's committed to make this happen? Is this something that we really do want to do? Do we want to commit to it? And if so, when? When is the right time? And there was a very enthusiastic from everybody in the group, yes, this is a great idea, let's run with it. And then there was some discussion around the timing, and what was decided was that Labor Day weekend is, what we heard from the chamber, was that that's when things kind of start to die off, that that's a weekend, it's a long weekend, it's traditionally kind of a family-oriented weekend, but our hotels aren't full then, our restaurants aren't full then, and we wanted to have this event at a time when things weren't full. We wanted to have it in a low season so that we could make it full as part of that economic stimulus for us. So that's why Labor Day weekend was picked. It's kind of the end of summer, things are starting to die off, and it's family-oriented, and we want this to be families. We want there to be so much activity and fun things going on that you can't drive by and keep going. We want people to see it and stop. We want people to hear about it elsewhere and plan on coming. So the collaboration has been amazing. You'll see here towards the end, a list of some of the partners that we have involved, but at this point, it's gone beyond just folks from different governmental or agencies. We've got nonprofits involved, we've got for-profits involved. The Triplegate has been a great supporter, they've been represented in some form or fashion at every meeting, and I'll get to what everybody's offered at this point. But the other big part of this is community pride, and this is something that Mr. Gitlin was speaking about earlier, is that, you know, we have this great community, let's make it beautiful, let's show it off. This is one way that we can do that, and this is one way that the people here can see all of the great things that we are in Crescent City, all of the great things that we have to offer, and everybody can participate in some way, whether they're on the giving end or the receiving end, this is something that everybody can get excited about and be proud of. So here's a few of our local parks, and I'm sure that we missed several because we have so many. And so we want people to think outside of the idea of park as like Beachfront Park, Redwood National State Parks, we have all of this great outdoor space, and there's really something for everybody. You know, there's a stark difference between going for a hike in South Grove or walking out on the dunes or playing frisbee golf at Beachfront Park. So here's what we've got together so far. The Chamber has offered to move the Barbecue Wars from the Fourth of July where they felt it was kind of getting smothered with some of the other events that were similar during that period, to this weekend, and then they want to expand it to do a Brew Fest with some of our local breweries, which we're starting to have now. They are working to make Barbecue Wars a sanctioned event. We don't know yet whether or not that's going to happen this year, but a sanctioned event can mean the difference between 12 participants and 40 participants. So they're really driving that, and I hope that they're successful. Live music, Seaquake has gracefully offered to step up and do live music for us, and so I don't want to start throwing names out there prematurely, but there are some bands that have been contacted, and I think that it's going to be fun, a really good time. Swearing in of Junior Rangers, this one's kind of a funny one because originally, we had thought, man, wouldn't it be great if we could break the Guinness World Record for swearing in of Junior Rangers? And then somebody down south went right away and sworn 40,000 of them. So I don't think that we're going to break any overall records, but we may break some local records. And even if we don't break any records, swearing in a, you know, like Connie pointed out, this is really about getting the generations involved in parks, and this is one way to do it. My little Junior Ranger over there hasn't survived this discussion, but he's a Junior Ranger multiple times over. And it really gets them excited when you see them going through that pamphlet and trying to accomplish all the activities, and then they get to stand there with the Ranger and get sworn in, and what a proud moment if you're eight years old, you know. StoryCorps, I did not know anything about StoryCorps before we started this, and StoryCorps is really a neat program, and the main idea is that you get people together that know each other well, you know, husband-wife, aunt-uncle, mother-son, and you interview them about their experience around something. And so this, the school district has really latched onto this to work with the Park Service and has offered up a significant amount of money to bring StoryCorps here to train some of our high schoolers in how to do this, and they're working on trying to put together a portable recording studio to make this happen. And so we can really capture a lot of local kind of oral stories around our park experiences and have those survive, and we can also capture those experiences for the people that come and visit here. So we've thrown out this number of, a goal of 100 stories for this year, and there hasn't been a deadline decided yet if that 100 is to be by this event or by the end of the year, but kind of the idea is at this event, we would have some stories to share, and we would also have them there to record more stories as people pass through. Stand-up paddleboarding and kayaking rentals and free instruction. North Coast Ocean Sports has offered to be down there. We've checked the tide tables and everything, and weather permitting, to have some activity there in the bay while all this is going on, they've offered up 30 minutes of free instruction for people who don't have a history with this, and then they'll have rentals there if people want to continue to get wet. So, beach wheelchair access, there was a successful grant for seven, seven beach wheelchairs. So we would like to have beach wheelchairs down there, and hopefully, our project with having beach access is finished at that point and we can get people down there. Bike tour and bike rentals, we're talking about a bike tour going from one end of town to the other through several of our parks, and having, again, some discussion, some stops along the way. Time capsule, again, you know, the school district has stepped up and offered to design and create this time capsule and have the high schoolers work on brainstorming some ideas for us on what could go into that capsule. And there's even been some discussion about maybe working, partnering them up with the seniors in the community to get those two perspectives on what should go in there. Interpretive storytelling, we've got those great little fire pits down there, and we thought it might be really nice to have some Rangers telling some interpretive stories, and we're working on trying to get the tribes involved with us as well, and possibly Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, so we're thinking about some sort of campfire experiences around this. Horseshoe tournament, Steve Gold has offered to lead that up, to make use of our great horseshoes down there. Art in the park, there's some discussion around this, maybe some instruction on some art, maybe some displays of art, so that's, they're new to the table, they haven't even been to a meeting yet, we just went and met with them. There's some discussion, this is the stuff that, there's a lot of movement behind, but I don't want to start putting names to it until we've got people pegged down as a commitment, but doing some soccer tournaments, farmer's market with vendors, dog events, ranger-led hikes, G-rated locally tied movies. I was presented the other day with the natural art treasure hunt, where people would create art and hide it along the beaches and get people excited to go out there and look for it. So as you can see, every day, we're getting contacted by new people who want to come participate in this somehow, and we really encourage that, you know, everybody, anybody around here that has something to offer, to come and meet with us. Right now, we're meeting at the Washington Fire Station at 10:00 a.m. on Thursdays, and to just see what, as you can see, you know, there's private businesses involved, too. This is a great chance for them to get what they do out there to people that haven't experienced it yet. And one of the best things about all of this was sitting around the table here at this last meeting and the meeting before, I think, and I just sat back and looked at the variety of people at the table and the organizations that they represent, and to see them all together and excited and working towards one goal is just, it's awesome, for lack of a better word. So we're starting to do some marketing. We've done this hashtag, Find Your Park Crescent City, that can be used on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram accounts, set up a YouTube channel, have a meeting on Thursday to create some video around this. The Triplegate has offered to do a series of op-eds and articles over the summer to build up excitement for this, and then they will do a special edition piece for this event with sponsorships by different organizations or entities, and then some history given around the parks or some stories, so that this will really be like a keepsake item that goes with this event, possibly put in one in that time capsule that we talked about. And so this is a great opportunity for all sorts of people in our community to participate in, to be proud of, to go out and enjoy. And so my request of you would be, as we've got different organizations contributing in different ways for this, Beachfront Park obviously was kind of the ideal place- park obviously was kind of the ideal place to do this. And so we would ask that, in light of what is being done here and the great work that's been accomplished, that we waive fees for the weekend for use of these facilities. We would still ask the different organizations to provide insurance to cover their activities, their projects. But we want to, you know, really have the heart of this be around beachfront park. Expect that there will be some things that happen in other areas. For instance, the Kite Club, annual kite flying event is that weekend on South Beach. So there should be stuff happening everywhere, but we want it concentrated in beachfront park and really use the Cultural Center to the best of its ability. And have some cool stuff happening in there, too. And then maybe people can see, you know, the full extent of what all of these different areas can be used for. So I would ask for that, and then also ask for the approval for, to set a time capsule in the beachfront park area, and that we would work with the school district on making sure that those designs and placement, you know, fit what the city's needs and requirements. So.
That sounds great. It's awesome. I was just thinking that if you need any drone footage, just tell me where you want me to go.
Definitely be drone footage.
Is there any questions for Ms. Scott or Ms. Battleburn?
Just a quick comment. The, I don't think you mentioned the pool. The pool will play a role, I would think.
Yeah, we haven't talked about the pool a whole lot yet. So that was brought to my attention the other day, that we're kind of lacking what we would do with that. But yeah, I think that that's, obviously, something needs to be addressed, yeah.
And if you need more bands, I think I can.
You might know somebody?
Yeah, I might know somebody that could put that together.
Okay. And also speakers, you know, I reached out to a couple of speakers today, too, but I kind of thought that it might be nice to have some speakers that talk about specifically the way that, you know, kind of on the building healthy communities line of thinking that where you live has a direct impact on your health. And so I think that having some people talk about what being out in nature and participating in nature does for your health would be great for this event, too.
Have you reached out to the Disc Golfers?
I did reach out to the Disc Golfers this morning.
Oh, great.
Yep.
You probably have all the bases covered. Um, yeah. Any other questions, comments?
I just have a couple of comments about the, I've been a part of the planning group, and I've met with them a couple, three times. And I'm, I'm excited about the, the potential of the, of the event. And I'm, and I'm thankful for the partnership with the, the Park Service. And I guess, I look at, there's two things that, that are, that are on my mind. Number one, I do think that the value of another annual event in our community can be a good thing. That's, that's one issue, and this provides some, maybe some impetus to get that started. And so from that standpoint, I'm, I'm all in. On another side, and one that obviously I have spoken about on several occasions, the relationship that we have with the, the Park Service, and specifically my concerns that I have expressed about our, about the, the, the local presence that they have here, I would hope, and, and I've worked with Connie on the Visitor Bureau and appreciate, you know, her involvement in our community, I would hope that this partnership would instill a understanding of the value that we place as a city on working with the Park Service, and certainly encourage them to, say, continue to be a good partner with us. Because the reality is, is as we build good partnerships, it's going to be good for all of us. And this is a much bigger issue than just an event. I hope that this is, is a opportunity to strengthen that relationship, because this community, as we know by looking at, at numbers, and the Park Service is aware of this as, as we are, that, that their presence in our community significantly impacts us. And so my hope is, is that this working together, that the synergy that, that you talk about between you and Connie, which is evident, and having been in meetings with you, I think it's awesome. I really do. We need this partnership, but we need this partnership to be, go beyond just this event. And so on two fronts, I'm very much encouraged about this. I think another event in our community can be a good thing. I hope that building a stronger relationship and a stronger working relationship between us and the Park Service breeds a future relationship that will continue to benefit this community. We, we need that. So, I mean, I'm, it's, it's, it's an exciting opportunity on a lot of fronts, I hope.
I'd like to add on that just briefly, and state that I agree with everything you said, and not only our collaboration with the Park Service, but this has kind of provided a forum for a lot of discussions between us and these other groups on other issues also. You see people hanging out afterwards and talking about other plans. And so between us and these other organizations, and then also between these other organizations, this has become a really neat kind of networking opportunity.
So thank you to Connie and Chris, and to you, Kimmy, and everyone else involved with this. It's, it's very exciting. And reading through the, the staff report, I got pretty tickled about it, but hearing you speak about it tonight really gets, gets me very enthused. I had one question. Now, will we have How Park East done by then? You, you had it mentioned in the staff report, so I was just wondering.
Yeah, so I have been told that there's a good possibility that it will be done by then.
Okay, great, because I love our How Park, I love our How Park West, and so I was just kind of curious about that, and.
I'm hoping if I invite enough storytellers, that, I, I need those extra fire pits, that it'll just happen.
Okay, great. And then if you have somebody that you think might be a good person to connect with the StoryCorps, for example, Linda Malu was one of our park interpreters up at the Howland Hill School. She would be a good person for one of the kids to interview for the StoryCorps. So, I, I love StoryCorps. I listen to NPR all the time, so I'm really excited about us having our oral history recorded with the StoryCorps. So, I think that's a great, another connection, that we can spread our history of Delmarque County and, and our parks. So I, I love that idea. There's just so many great things to love about this, the bike tour, everything. So thanks, thanks to everybody for all their hard work and what you're doing. And so you can, you're, are you meeting every Thursday at 10:00, or?
Every other Thursday. So this upcoming Thursday on the 7th is our next meeting.
Okay.
And then, yeah, every other Thursday at the Washington Fire Station.
Okay, great. Thanks.
I actually do have a portable recording device. And also, my, my sound system is at your disposal. So I can help the StoryCorps if need to. And multiple ones.
Okay, so I don't know if there's other questions or comments, but I would move to adopt resolution number 2016-10, co-sponsoring Find Your Park Crescent City 2016 and waive associated event permit and rental fees. We should probably handle these things one at a time.
Yeah, but we also have to do public comment on this.
Okay.
So, is there any public comment on this particular issue? All right. Seen no public comment, and closed public comment. Okay, continue.
You're going to make me do that again?
Of course. You're serious. Okay.
No. I'll second it. But you already said.
So we have a motion and a second. Could you, is there any more discussion? All right, could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro-Tim In-Score?
Yes.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. It was a very entertaining and extensive presentation. Unfortunately, I will not have a lacrosse tournament ready for you by that time, but I'll try to help however I can. Okay, so on to item number eight. Consider request.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. I think there was one more bullet here.
Oh, was there one more?
And I would move to approve the placement of a tying capsule within the beachfront park boundary.
You're correct, sir.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a second, I mean, a motion and a second on placing the time capsule. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro-Tim In-Score?
Yes.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes, thank you for that. All right. Now moving on to item number eight. Consider request to co-sponsor a small business forum put on by Assemblymember Jim Wood in the Cultural Center in July 26, 2016. Mr. Knight?
Thank you, Mayor Gasno, councilmembers. Certainly hard to follow the enthusiasm from that last presentation. I applaud everyone that's been working on it. There was a nice little thread or segue into this discussion, which was help our local economy. So Assemblymember Jim Wood did contact your staff. Assemblymember Jim Wood's staff contacted your staff and let us know that Assemblymember Wood would like to sponsor a small business forum in Crescent City sometime in July. And he let us know that they needed a venue that would accommodate 50 to 70 persons. So we talked at a staff level, determined that the Cultural Center would be a good venue for the training. So we have tentatively reserved the Cultural Center, center pending council approval. So basically, it would be the Governor's Office of Economic Development, or commonly known as GoBiz, would be the presenters. And they would be here to provide our small businesses, inform them about the state resources that are available to help small business owners and entrepreneurs expand and add jobs. They're also going to be in attendance. Well, they're going to be in attendance, but they'll take questions. And then Jim Wood, Assemblymember Wood, will also be in attendance, and he will be available to also answer questions. So I think it'll be a huge value to our small business community. Certainly at a staff level, we support the notion of getting the Assemblymember and the Governor's Office up here. I've worked with GoBiz in the past, and they have a lot of resources that many people wouldn't be aware of without the training. So with that, Assemblymember, Assemblymember Wood's office is also reaching out to the Chamber of Commerce and the Delmarque Economic Development Corporation and other groups to see if they could get them to participate. So from a staff level, it's, it's pretty exciting to get the Assemblymember up here and the Governor's Office of Economic Development. So what we're asking the council to do is approve the request by Assemblymember Wood to co-sponsor the event, and then direct your staff to not charge the approximate amount of $735. So there would be a potential loss of revenue if we kick someone else, but maybe not, because that's not a real busy time during the middle of the week there. So with that, we identified this would, if this event takes place, it would support City Council's strategic goal, too, which is promote a thriving local economy. So that concludes my short report.
Discussion.
Is there going to be any cost to the participants to participate in this?
Not that I'm aware of, and there typically is not, but we didn't discuss that. But I don't believe that would be the case.
I think it's great.
All right.
What's the charge, people? I mean, if, if they're, if they're going to charge business owners to come to it, then I think they should pay for the rental. I, I mean, that's, I mean, that's just my thought. I mean, if, if, if it's a revenue generating thing that's, that they're bringing in money, then they really want to help us thrive, don't charge us to, to train us.
I, I really don't think that's their intent.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so.
Um, any other discussion from the, okay, I'd like to open this up, public comment. Anybody like to comment on this? Nope. I'm going to close it up. Come on. Mr. Howard, you'd always comment on economic. We're not doing enough. Okay, so we're going to move back to the council, and I will entertain a motion or any other discussion.
I would approve we co-sponsor by waiving the $735 rental fee for the Assemblymember Wood's small business forum at the Cultural Center.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro-Tim In-Score?
Yes.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes, thank you, and that passes unanimously. Okay, we are done with our agenda, agenda items, and we're now going on to city council items. Any legislative matters? No, no legislative matters. City manager report.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor Gasno, councilmembers. Just a couple of items to fill you in on. As you know, Michael Saber approached the council a couple of meetings ago and talked about Jonathan Point and raised a couple of concerns. Your Public Works staff is aware of the issues. They've been out there recently to provide some temporary barriers to try and keep people from venturing out to the edge of the cliff there. Those temporary measures are temporary, and they're looking at, they're looking at permanent solutions. And we'll also be talking with our risk managers. So Public Works is working hard to manage that, the Jonathan Point.
Is there any way we can get a grant to maybe shore that up?
We're, you know, we're looking at the big fix for sure. So I'm sure our Public Works Director will be looking at every funding opportunity that might be out there.
He, he needs a project to do. He doesn't have enough on his plate right now.
And then just the second item for me, and then we're going to ask Mr. Ware to brief you on some travel he's planning. But, so this morning, the city clerk did receive 219 signatures for the referendum regarding ordinance 792, which was the sewer charges that the council and staff has worked very hard on, that was adopted by the council on March 7th, 2016. 172 valid signatures are required for the petition to be found to be sufficient. The city has 30 days, excluding weekends and holidays, to verify the signatures. Your city clerk will be working, will, worked on the verification with the oversight of the county clerk, Ms. Northrup. If found insufficient, no action is needed by the council, and the ordinance would take effect. If there were enough signatures, so it was found to be sufficient, the clerk would then certify those results and bring it back to the city council. So if found sufficient, council will have a couple of options. One would be to consider repeal of the ordinance, rather than having it go to a ballot measure. The second option, and of course, we'd come back and talk to you as this moves along. Second option would be to submit the ordinance to the voters, and then it would take a majority vote for the council to be able to enact that ordinance. If there was not a majority vote, the ordinance cannot be enacted by the city council for at least one year. So I think the first step is verifying the signatures before we can have the further discussion on where we want to go. So we just want to let you know that did take place today. And it did come in the form that it was needed. We just need to verify the signatures.
Thank you. Any questions? Is that, and your report over?
No. I'm just going to ask our Public Works Director to come up and brief the council on some travel he's planning.
Thank you.
Although it doesn't exceed the 2,000.
Is it in your budget?
Yes, as a matter of fact. So yes, just wanted to give the council just a quick update that we have been working with Senator Maguire's office, as well as Board Supervisor Member Chris Howard, as well as the local CSD's representative Craig Bradford, Lyndon Crockett, in regard to the water conservation regulations. So we've been successful in planning a meeting. That meeting's going to occur a week from today. It'll be April 11th at 3:30. It's set up with the senator, as well as hopefully some board staff from the Water Department. The topic or the agendas are going to focus just on Delmarque and Humboldt County water issues, so we'll be able to, to address any water-related issues at that time. So it should be, should be a good meeting, and when I come back, I can report to the council on our, on our success, while I'm giving you an update. That meeting has been scheduled.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ware, just one thing, and also, I guess, to Mr. Knight as well. Because of the importance of, of this, and it certainly was not a planned out. Because of the importance of this, and it certainly was not a planned-out travel, if for some reason, given where our timing is, that this does present any challenges from a budget standpoint, please feel free to come back to us, because I think we were really clear at our last meeting how important it is that we have a staff presence to this, and I don't want that to take away from any other travel or anything else within your normal duties or our staff's normal duties. So, feel free to come back to us if there's anything that, that's my take, because we want you, we want staff at this. This is critical for our community. So, I mean, that's just my way in, but don't feel compelled to not do something else because we've directed you to do this.
Or to have to bring a sack lunch.
Yeah.
No, definitely appreciated.
We'll buy you lunch.
So, yeah, right now, I believe it is just going to be myself that's going to be traveling down. There's two possible meetings. There's the April 11 meeting, which will be just a small focus group with the senator and a couple of select board staff. And then, there'll be the more full-board workshop on the 20th. I am planning on being in attendance on both. My travel plans are going to be pretty condensed, as we have a lot going on here as well, so there shouldn't be much as far as expenses. My plan is to get up early that morning, that Monday morning, drive down, attend the meeting, make my journey most of the way back, maybe stay one night somewhere, and then I'll be back the next day.
Well, thank you for doing that. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Okay, that concludes, city manager report?
Yes, I did want to comment that that's another great example of your staff building networking and building relationships with other agencies, including the state.
Very good.
What, I mean, we're not just an isolated city? Okay. All right, council reports. Who would like to go first? Mr. Inscore.
All right, well, let's see. Since our last meeting, I attended the Last Chance Grade Town Hall that Caltrans put on, and listened to their presentation, and asked a few questions, and had a few questions asked of me. Thought that the staff did a good job of trying to lay out the situation. I know that none of us are probably content with the answers we're getting, but we have to live with some of these processes, and as difficult as that may be. So, I appreciate Caltrans trying to reach out and inform our community. I did attend the Find Your Park planning meeting. We had a special visitor bureau meeting. The visitor bureau has been tasked with the revamping of the display, the county display at the Capitol. I have not seen the county displays, but we are, as I understand, in a prime location right outside the governor's area in the basement, which seems sort of counterintuitive to me, but that's okay. And so, we are investing some money in a new cutting-edge design, and we have had a couple of meetings with the team that's doing that. And so, hopefully, that will be a real positive representation of our community to those who visit the Capitol and see.
Yeah, on a note on that, the last two times I've been at the Capitol, I've had them take off the display glass to fix and put pictures back up on the wall. Yeah, I had to go down to maintenance, all over the place, and I got them. Yeah, we took that glass down, we fixed it up, and we put it back, and so, it's been something that's been-
Well, thank you for your community service, man. I appreciate it.
Couple, couple of years. I think Mr. Holly was with me one time, yes.
The two of you did it together.
That's right.
Wow. That just speaks so well of our-
We packed our lunches, too, so.
It's like mayor and former mayor going above and beyond the call of duty. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Short?
Mr. Short, go ahead.
I think I'm going to be hearing about packing a lunch for a while, maybe. Yeah. I too, all's I've got is the town hall meeting that Caltrans put on for us. As Mr. Inscore said, a lot of things were told to us that we couldn't really understand or agree upon. One thing in particular was environmental studies that take five to eight years. That was pretty hard for me to swallow. I kind of thought I could get my environmental science degree and do the study myself inside of five or eight years. And that may sound humorous, but it's true. Five to eight years for that seemed kind of ridiculous. At the same time, I think Caltrans was, you know, realizing they can't do their project on their own, was looking for community support. They need our community to reach out to our legislatures and ask for some action to be done there for Last Chance Grade. So, I appreciate that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Murray?
Before I start, in our policy and procedure manual, I would like to maybe switch this around like the Board of Supervisors does, because usually, we're really tired at the end of the meeting, and maybe consider reporting out at the beginning of the meeting, because there's a lot of things that we do that maybe we should take a little more time to share just a thought. So, that might be something we might want to change in our policies. I think you guys all were, and you've probably forgot, that we had the lead-in awards on Tuesday, the 22nd, and I think all of us were there, and those are very important awards for law enforcement, and so, and our own Holly Green got an award, and she's here in the audience, so we're very proud of her. Congratulations again, Holly. And then, we did have the Last Chance Grade presentation that Caltrans did, and contrary to what Councilmember Short said, and I know that it is frustrating, but those environmental studies are critical, and that all the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted in order to make sure that they're done completely and thoroughly. So, they're really important, and that's why it's, they do take a long time to do, and that's a lot of land to cover, and you have to do all the biological studies, and for the fish and all the animals and the trees and everything. So, it's a lot more complicated than it sounds on the surface, and so, that's why those environmental, because they have to do the CEQA and the NEPA. So, there's two different types of, so, they do take quite a bit of time, and I know that they'll be done as quickly as possible, but I don't know if they, they can't be expedited, in other words, so, but they'll do them as quickly as possible. And I thought that they did a good job in that breaking down the town hall questions at the end of the meeting. I think that that streamlined it so that we, some people were frustrated, I overheard comments after the meeting was over, that you didn't have the whole question and answer forum in the whole group, but I think it was smarter to just do the individual sections or kiosks or whatever they were called, so that you could get more thorough answers from the individual Caltrans staff that was there. And I think that that was probably a better way to handle it, so that you could get more technical answers from the questions if people did, were willing to stay at the end. So, that's a different type of town hall than probably what people were expecting. I had a conference call on Thursday with the League of Cities for our Redwood Empire Division regarding a bill that was going to impact Fortuna, and even though we don't have a system in place for the council to send a letter, I sent an individual letter opposing the bill for Fortuna. It was on something that would impact them for their economics, so I sent an individual letter, not from the city. And then, on Friday, I traveled down. Scott Feller drove Martha McClure and myself to the first annual summit provided by Senator McGuire on the homeless situation, and he had seven counties there, so it was a really well-attended summit, and it's something that impacts the entire region, the entire state, and the entire nation. And we're trying to put best practices into place so that we can resolve the issue and not just put a Band-Aid over it, and so, it was a really good summit, and I look forward to a bill that the senator's planning on introducing soon. And then, last Friday, we had a, the CAPC did the, the Child Abuse Prevention Council did the flag raising for child abuse prevention at the fairgrounds, and that was good. And I also had an interview on KFOD, which I appreciated doing last Friday. So, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Holly.
Thank you. I too attended the lead-in awards for law enforcement, and we're very fortunate to have so many law enforcement officers and to be so highly qualified. I appreciate all that they do. Went to tri-agency meeting, I think you might have been there. Mr. Short was there also. And we, it's an interesting organization right now, but we did talk some about the need to work on some kind of marketing for our redundant internet that we have available to us. We actually have a really good systematic assurance that people can stay online, and we should be able to recruit businesses, maybe call centers or something like that. So, we're looking at how we might market that and what kind of a business we might want to have come in, and there's a lot of work to be done. But, we're now talking about some of these innovative ideas, and a lot of the work that we've done to date will hopefully pave the way for that. I did go to the annual meeting of the senior center, and that was interesting, and of course, I was re-elected on the senior center, and in fact, we had a board of directors meeting thereafter, and I am the vice chair again this year, so that'll be a busy year with the senior center. The town hall meeting with Last Chance Grade, I thought, was very interesting. As you know, I'm your representative on the stakeholders' group, and so, we know the complexity of that particular project is just tremendous. So, there's no real simplistic way to look at it. We're talking about projects that'll be probably between $500 million and $1 billion. These aren't easy matters to attack, and we, just to do it emotionally, or to, it needs to be done in an organized fashion so that we can get our word forward. And I say that because I volunteered at the last meeting that this council will probably be willing, certainly be willing, to write letters when letters are timely to go back to Washington and get at least the emergency funding to get things started. But, every time I think about the idea of taking until 2039, I just can't quite believe it. But, I do believe it when I realize the 199 project, 197, 199 project, has taken 15 years, and that's still not completed, and that's a very simplistic project compared to going through Redwood's Last Chance Grade. So, I understand the emotionality behind this, and I think we need to keep that behind us, but I think we need to be cognizant that we need to move forward in an organized fashion. So, we will continue to work on that as a group. I also attended the flag raising for child abuse at the fairgrounds. As most of you know, both Councilmember Murray and myself worked in Child Protective Services, and it's something near and dear to our hearts, and it was a nice function, so, thank you.
Thank you. I went to the lead-in awards on the 22nd. As a teacher, I had last week off, and I enjoyed three days out into the parks, showing some college friends and their kids Boy Scout tree trail and some other great things. Smith River, they've never seen like open rivers like we have, being down in San Luis Obispo, an area. So, I had a great time visiting with them. And then, I just want to remind everybody that we do have a special solid waste meeting tomorrow, picking our public members, so if anyone wants to come by and comment on that, please come on by. So, that's it. That's basically my report right there. And so, we would, oh, come on. No further business before this board. We're going to adjourn to our next scheduled meeting, which will be-
Yeah, there's actually a special meeting on Tuesday with the Fire Board, the 12th.
Yes, on the 12th of April, Fire Board at, what, 6 o'clock?
I believe it's 5:00.
5:00. That sounds good. All right, so, we'll be there, and then, of course, we'll have a regular scheduled meeting in two weeks. Thank you very much.